The sun shines, Dan.
Paul and I had that all taken care of. I would say six, five to six is what I think we ended up with. Yeah, that was, but. Down there, though, the good Lord puts it there and he takes it away too, right? The good Lord puts it there and he takes it away too. Hey, don't say that because he's gonna want an expense reimbursement for that. As long as the meetings are all in California, I wouldn't give a shit.
Please turn your mics. I have six o'clock. I'll call a meeting to order. Let's start out with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I learned under God, instead of under God, when I was a kid, so I just keep saying it. That's why I'm always out at sync with you guys. Well, I just didn't want you guys to think I'm that stupid that I wouldn't catch on in, in six years or eight years. Okay. Would you take a roll call, Patty?
Here.
John.
Here.
Stan.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Don.
Here. Thank you. First item on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
That'd be a good idea.
Prove the agenda.
Yeah.
We got, we got conflict first.
Oh, yep.
I have an item to add to the agenda. I, uh, we need to add a.
Let's, let's go through these other two things first and then, all right? Then we'll add it. Is there any reason for anybody to abstain for any of the items on the agenda?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Okay, then I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda now.
I have an item to add to the agenda, apparently that in August, the August twenty-seven, twenty-twenty meeting prior to the time of most of us.
In, no, February of this year. We approved it, but it was ordered.
Oh, all right. I take that back. There was a motion made in February of this year, but the motion did not have the amendment and the amendment number, so we need to add that to our agenda, and I would suggest since it's bridge-related that we add a six feet.
Is what?
Six feet under the, after the highway.
That's this, this piece of paper we have. What, what is that concerning then? Just a DOT agreement? Got it. I'd second her amendment to the agenda.
And with that addition, I am going to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Dan. We have a second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, motion carries. Are there any items for public comment? Gary, is there anything on the? Hearing that there are none, we'll move on. Uh, next item on the agenda is a revised joint powers agreement. Amy, lean on.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, members of the County Commission and staff. For those of you who may not be aware, we are in a joint powers agreement, and when I say we, I mean the City of Yankton and Yankton County, along with the City of Vermillion and Clay County, to handle our solid waste and recycling operations. Uh, we operate the transfer station, as you know, at the City of Yankton, and over in Vermillion, they operate the trans, uh, the landfill. This agreement was established, um, back in the early nineties, I believe, and is really, um, a marriage between the four entities. And, uh, like all good marriages, when you're gonna spend a lot of money, you should probably talk about it first, so, um, that's, that's what I'm here to do this evening. Um, the purpose of the amendment that's before you for this joint powers agreement is so that we can, uh, construct a leachate pond over in Vermillion at the landfill. So the best way to, uh, describe the leachate pond, I hope people haven't, have already eaten their dinner, is sort of the liquid trash runoff, um, area. So it holds the liquid from the trash until it can be safely dealt with or evaporates, what have you, and so, uh, we need to build a second one, um, over in the transfer, uh, at the landfill. Cost for that is estimated to be one million, uh, forty-three thousand, two hundred dollars, and, uh, the Joint Powers Board has applied for a loan through the Department of Agricultural Natural Resources. That's a revolving loan fund, um, in January twenty-twenty-three, and later this month, they'll consider that application if all of the, uh, entities involved in the agreement have authorized the amendment. Excuse me. Uh, this has been approved by the City of Vermillion City Council as well as the Clay County, uh, Commission. Uh, I will be bringing it forward to the City of Yankton, um, on Monday, so, uh, if this is something that you, uh, decide to approve this evening, I would, um, respectfully ask your signature so I can take it with me this, this evening and then get it over to, uh, Joint Powers in Vermillion shortly after our meeting on Monday evening. Excuse me. Happy to answer any questions. I'm losing my voice. I must talk too much.
We can assume that this is an absolute necessity or?
Yes, it's an absolute necessity. State requires, uh, you'd have so much leachate space for the size of landfill, so we're coming up to that, uh, time where we need to have that, so.
Now's the prob, probably the time to do it with the money that the state has, because who knows what it's gonna be like next year.
And the, uh, state revolving loan fund is paid for by the fees of the users, so in the county, you have private haulers that pay, uh, user fees for a transfer station and for the landfill. For us, and we collect our, uh, solid waste within the city, those of you who live in city limits, um, you get that attached to your utility bill and that helps pay for, uh, the joint powers operation. So we're not asking for any direct county general funds to pay off this loan in the future.
You're just asking for approval.
Yep.
Yeah, yes, we're just in, like, we're, we have to, we're in the marriage, we have to go in together.
I would make a motion to approve the ninth amendment to the joint powers agreement.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second to approve the ninth amendment to the joint powers agreement. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed the same?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is the twenty-twenty-three, three oh-six street improvement plan with Mike.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I got, uh, on the agenda, twenty-twenty-three, uh, three oh-six street improvement plan. Originally, last year at the five-year plan meeting, we, uh, approved to do, uh, asphalt overlay on the twelve miles of the Tabor Road, three hundred and six street. This year, after, uh, getting bids in for, for asphalt and, and so on and so forth, um, last year approximately a mile of asphalt was, the cost of the county, about a hundred and twenty thousand a mile. This year, we're probably looking at close to a hundred and sixty thousand a mile. If you look in that packet I hand, handed out, I have one, the original, I have a plan with changes and then the original one. Then also, uh, a sheet kind of explaining what, uh, what the differences are with the costs. So my proposed change to the, the plan for this year would be to not do the twelve miles of new asphalt on the Tabor Road, but to turn that into micro-surfacing, uh, which has approximate cost of sixty thousand a mile.
Is that item number twelve or one, six?
Yep, that'd be, well, on the map there, I have listed out number of miles. That's what them numbers are.
But that's that one?
Yep. Um, so that was originally green on the map, turning it to purple for micro-surfacing, um, and then, uh, the four miles of the Johnson Bridge Road. We've been planning to pave that for the last two years, and that just hasn't happened, so penciling out, if we were to go to Tabor Road, getting twelve miles of micro-surfacing and no asphalt, it would free up enough money to do the Johnson Bridge Road project, three oh-three.
Are we pulling that one up a year or is that just lagged behind?
That's lagged behind for the last two years.
And then, uh, I don't have an issue with that, but, uh, when, when was the last inspection of that bridge?
It'll been last year. That gets, that gets inspected every year.
Make sure we do that after the inspection, because I know in years past, they've done that and then did the inspection, and then we had to dig up some of the roadbed, you know, for those, uh, cracked gurk, so we'll just make sure it's in good shape before we do that.
Yep, that, that bridge, all four Jim River bridges are on a yearly inspection.
Okay.
If you look at my cost sheet, if we stick with the original plan of overlaying the Tabor Road and twelve miles there and not doing anything with the Johnson Bridge, Road, I shouldn't even say a bridge, but three oh-three, let's say, um, sticking to the original work plan, that'd put us negative two hundred and sixty-four thousand, roughly, sticking with that plan. If we go to my proposed plan with doing the twelve miles of micro-surfacing, plus adding the four miles of overlay on three oh-three there, um, it would save us, we'd be in the plus two hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Mike, one question on the overlay on three oh-three. Why did you choose that as opposed to a micro-surface?
It's in pretty tough shape.
So you don't, you don't think it's a candidate to micro-surface it like the Tabor Road?
No, she, it's, it's, it's out of whack pretty bad.
That makes sense.
And don't get me wrong with Tabor Road, we'll still have to go through and do some asphalt patching. You know, there's some areas that need improvement before we would micro-surface.
Sure.
And last year was our first year of micro-surfacing, um, and what they did for us, I've heard really good feedback on it, which I, I think it's been excellent. Clay County, they've been doing it now for probably five years, and I've had good luck with it, so. That's just a way to stretch the dollar. Also, it, it's still an improvement, um, plus if we do the plan with changes here, um, instead of doing, uh, we'd be doing an extra four miles of, of improvement, and so instead of doing twenty-two miles of improvement, we'd be up to twenty-six for this year.
What's substantial saving?
With, yeah.
Doing more for less money, which is a good thing.
So if, if I can comment on this also, um, I've traveled both of those roads and, and Mike and I have kind of collaborated on this, and we discussed it, and I believe that this is, uh, would be a recommended way to handle, like Mike said, we're, we're doing more for less money. And the, the four miles of the, the Johnson Bridge Road is, is in really bad shape, and it's time that gets redone. And I, I think there's been enough, utilizing Clay County's experience with the micro-surfacing, I think there's enough background there to, to adhere to, to moving that forward with that Tabor Road. Uh, the Tabor Road's got a lot of traffic on it, but at the same token, that Johnson Bridge Road with Highway forty-six being closed, uh, possibly for two years now, that, that road is gonna get some tremendous traffic. We've already resurfaced the Walstown Road, so that'd give everybody from Yankton a, a good route to, over to Irene and, and Pass, so.
The only problem I potentially see with that is if that gets used as a detour route, then we, we get, well.
It would be for, for cars and trucks, maybe a pickup trailer, but like semis, the bridge limits that.
Okay. Yep.
Okay, then, yeah. We don't wanna make it too nice and then, you know, that, we don't get reimbursed for a non-established detour route, but.
Understand.
Uh, and then have we done any micro-surfacing on any of our roads? We did something last year.
South of Val and the Three Miles, which.
And that turned out pretty good?
There was some really deep wheel ruts there, and that turned out excellent. Um, if you want a real good comparison, uh, back in twenty-twenty, I believe it was, um, if you guys remember, uh, we paved four and a half miles of Old Fifty from Walstown to just about a half mile east of four four eight. Anyways, uh, then we ran short of funds and we weren't able to finish the other two and a half miles. Well, last year, instead of overlaying that other two and a half miles, we did the micro-surface, and so if you want a good comparison from asphalt mat to the micro-surfacing, I, I think I did well.
Appreciate, uh, John and you willingness to look at new technologies that are just as good and save tax dollars and getting more done for less money. It's a win-win, so. I'd make a motion to approve the three oh-six improvement plan.
I'll second that.
Ryan, you, you seconded it?
Seconded, yep.
I have a motion and a second to approve the changes in the plan. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed the same, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next item on the agenda is a drainage issue.
Uh, we have to do.
Yep, yep.
And I think that'd be short and sweet. Um, I would like to, uh, modify the motion that was made on February seven, twenty-three, because the motion really at that time did not include the amendment number or the agreement number, and I would move to include the amendment number one to agreement number seven, one, seven, three, nine, six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now a drainage issue.
Chairman, I've got some handouts that maybe will assist me in explanation of the action.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll let you do the job, go there and do it now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, ladies, ladies and gentlemen of the Yankton County Commission, my name is Dennis Duncan. I'm a lawyer in Parker, South Dakota, and Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And, uh, I'm here today representing the Riken Legacy Land Trust and, and Mr. Steve Riken. The purpose of my appearance this evening, uh, before the commission, and I do appreciate the opportunity to, to address the commission, but my purpose is to request of the county commissioners that they, uh, consider the initiation of some controls for drainage management pursuant to SDCL forty-nine, or forty-six A, ten A, twenty, which that statute is contained in the packet of materials that I handed out. Whoops, my secretary did it. Did everybody get close? No.
It's not.
Excuse me.
It's not in mine.
I apologize. That's why you should let your secretary work the other day. I'll try again. Okay, I apologize for that. In any event, um, we're here, uh, to ask the county commission to give consideration to the initiation of some drainage management controls, uh, which I believe and assert are, uh, are given, uh, authority by the legislature. Now, I understand, after appearing before several county commissions in several different counties with respect to drainage matters and drainage controversies, most county commissioners would rather be going to the dentist for a root canal than, uh, get involved in, uh, drainage, uh, disputes or drainage matters. And I also understand the history of, uh, of the, uh, Yankton County Commission with respect to, uh, their adoption of, of, uh, some drainage ordinances in the past and then the repeal of those drainage ordinances. And I want to emphasize, uh, initially in my comments that we're not requesting, the Reikons are not requesting that the, this county commission adopts any countywide drainage ordinances or the adoption of any coordinated drainage areas, which bring into play a whole different set of, of issues for the, uh, commission and for the citizens of the county. But what we're, we're asking the court to, or the, uh, commission to consider at, at this point in time is consideration to initiate some controls or in drainage management pursuant to the statute that I, that I've, uh, given here, given out here tonight. Just to give you a little bit of background of what, what brings me here to the commission, and some of you I know have been on the county commission long enough that you know you've got some history with respect to the disputes that have arisen out of the drainage in the particular area that we're gonna talk about here. But the, the Riken, uh, Riken Legacy Land Trust, the Riken property, has been in the Riken property for over a hundred and twenty-two years. Over the course of their ownership, up until the, uh, two thousand nineteen, they never really experienced on the, on the property in question, they never really experienced any dramatic flooding or drainage problems, uh, similar to what happened in March and later in June, July and August of two thousand and nineteen. Certainly, uh, you all will, will remember that in March of two thousand nineteen, uh, there was that bomb cyclone, as they, they like to call it, uh, which created all kinds of problems, uh, over the eastern part of South Dakota. And as you might recall, the ground was frozen, it was covered in snow, and we had a, an extensive amount of precipitation in the form of rain that didn't have anywhere to go other than runoff. Well, as a result of that, uh, the property that was owned by. Well, as a result of that, the property that was owned by RC Investments lying south of Highway fifty-two and to the west of Timberland Drive, they have a large detention pond out there that was first created by the South Dakota Department of Highways and later purchased by RC Investments. They went through a number of reiterations with respect to what they wanted to do with that property, including making some effort to try to turn it into a greenhouse and a fish, a fish-growing operation, but ultimately, in March of two thousand nineteen, what you had there was a large concrete pad, as shown by the first photo that you have there, a building and a large retention pond. That particular retention pond, because of the surface water drainage patterns that we saw in this, on this property, it did fill. It filled to the point of going into the lower south end of the building that's shown on the lower right-hand corner of your first photo, there, up somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty to thirty-six inches deep. But I might point out to you that the construction of that building was actually, it was constructed as though the south end of that building was below the level of the surrounding ground, so that was a conscious choice that RC Investments made when they built that building on there to construct it, so the southern end of that building was actually below ground level. In that bomb cyclone, in filling up that detention pond and flooding part of the, that concrete pad and building, RC Investments took it upon themselves to pump that water out of that detention pond onto your county highway that runs north and south down towards the Timberland Development. And that water not only scoured out your highway, it ran into the Reichen property to the point that there was quite a bit of standing water that was pumped out of the detention pond onto the road that flowed into the Reichen property, that stayed there for a considerable amount of time, in fact, into June, when it finally became possible for the Reichens to farm through that lower, the lower area that's shown in that dark area to the east of the oil road. Well, then, after that situation created some misunderstanding. In June of two thousand nineteen, there were, Mr., the RC Investment people have testified in litigation, which I'll get into in just a little bit, in litigation, that they were warned that there was gonna be a very significant heavy rainfall in June of two thousand nineteen, and so what they did was, they took it upon themselves to create a, a situation that really brings me here today, which we would ask that you take some consideration of with respect to what they had done. And again, I'm gonna pass out some materials for you. I think it'd be a little easier for you to follow if you're able to have documents in front of you. If you would, you would take a look, and I know Mr. Sedlaic is very familiar with this situation, but if you take a look at the photographs here that I've, again, here I did it again, then I gave you all the same ones. Okay, we need to-
You got this one?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. If we could look at this particular photo, which should be in your packet there.
I didn't get that.
You didn't get that one?
Here's an extra. I got, I think it's full stuff.
Okay, you got it full stuff, sir? Okay.
I'm sure I got it.
Okay, yeah, you're good. You're good, you got it. Okay. So what we're talking about here, if we take a look at this, this particular photograph is, this isn't really a photograph, it's a rendition done by an engineering company as to what they were going to potentially do on this property in terms of creating this, either some type of farming operation or fishing operation or whatever, whatever they finally determined they were wanting to do with the property. But they eventually took, made a decision to place a, I'm gonna call it a pipe, underneath a field approach, which is on the very east end of this property, as shown by this photograph right here. And I'll show you an engineering report that was done by Bros Engineering, and you should have that in your, in your packet. It should look like this. Okay. If you'll take a look at this, there is a red line on this, and what this red line shows is your west ditch of Timberland Road. And when you get to that first red line that goes east and west, that's a culvert that was put under Timberland by the county when this road was created. The red line that goes across the eastern part of RC Properties, which is designated as RC pipe, is, that was put in at the time, at some point in time after RC Development bought this property, with the intention that they invited that water that was flowed down the west ditch of Timberland Drive to go into their detention pond. But in June of two thousand nineteen, in anticipation of this heavy rain event, RC Investments made the decision that they were gonna plug that pipe. What that, the action of plugging that pipe and keeping it plugged for over three months was to create an increased flow in terms of level in that west ditch, so that all that water, some of which would have previously run into the detention pond, all of it ran into the Reichen property and created a situation that is shown best by this photograph that you should all have in your packet. Yeah, there you go. This photograph, yeah, this photograph is most significant, and if you'll see this portion of the photograph right here, that blue portion is all water that's standing on the Reichen property as late as August of two thousand nineteen, well after this March event, well after the June event. You've heard us all before, Mr. Sedlaic, so I'm gonna keep my back turned if that's okay. What we're, what the Reichens are suggesting at this point in time, that there are new owners of the RC Investment property. We have reached out to those owners in an effort to try to develop some discussion with them with respect to the opening of this pipe, so that all of the water that comes down from the north and from the west, from the Highway fifty-two road ditches, down this west road ditch on Timberland Road, all of it doesn't have to flow into the, to the, eventually flow into the Reichen property. You've got a detention pond there that at various times in the year, it's, the level of that detention pond is gonna drop dramatically, to the point that there's no reason why they wouldn't accept additional waters into that and avoid the water going on to the Reichen property exclusively. If I could just draw your attention again to this first photograph that I showed you of the, of the RC Investment, yes, of the RC Investment property, you'll note, this is the level of that detention pond in August of two thousand nineteen. Clearly, there could have been more surface water drainage into that detention pond, its carrying capacity or holding capacity clearly was not being utilized, but the pipe remained closed. We feel this is indicative of the problem that you may face numerous times with respect to drainage issues in this Timberland area. You know, we've explored various alternatives as to what we could, we could do with respect to trying to channel this water, so that it didn't all necessarily just end up on the, on the Reichen property, but every plan that we've been able to come up with results in, like in most drainage disputes, the Reichens moving the water onto someone else. We can't move it to the south, because it would go into that Timberland addition, and they don't have the structure to really accept that water, and we can't send it on to our neighbors to the east and to the southeast of us, and they're not gonna be any more receptive to taking their water than the Reichens are. So what I'm, what I'm suggesting that we might be able to do here on a, on a more county cooperative basis would be to look at the initiation of some controls for drainage management in this area, and it'd be a localized drainage control project in area. What I, what I would suggest to the commission at this time, in terms of what our ask is today, would be that you consider the fact that, and give us some recognition as to the fact that we would like to initiate conversations with the current owners of the old RC Development property, a step that we've already taken. We've made contact with them, asking if they would like to initiate some conversation with respect to opening up that pipe to relieve the burden on the, on the Reichen property. And they could do it on a, you know, a continuous basis, or on such a basis, if they were in danger of being flooded, they could, they could close that pipe. That'd be one, one alternative that we would propose. But perhaps we need to look at this a little more broadly, because of the continued development to the west on Highway fifty-two, we're getting more concrete, more water going into the ditch, more water coming down the ditch, and in fact, that, that surface water that was never, under any circumstances, never naturally flowing onto the Reichen property. So we'd like the county commission to give some consideration to trying to look at a more broad scoped, but local, project that we could put into place that would allow this burden of all this surface water that's flowing down Highway fifty-two, both from the north of fifty-two and from the west on fifty-two, and down the west ditch on Timberland Drive, so that it doesn't all end up on the Reichen property where essentially it has no outlet. We don't wanna dump that water on our, on our neighbors, we don't wanna punch a hole through the fence line or dig some ditches and channel that water onto our neighbors to the southeast or into the east, and I think we're just stuck with the water going to the south. I don't think there's any real alternative that we currently have in mind that would move that, that water from the, from that area of the Reichen RC Development Properties down to the south. I don't see that as a real alternative, but it's a possibility, I guess. As I've indicated, RC Development, they've sold the property to a new owner. We've reached out to that owner, I have not heard from him yet. Yes, one, do you have a question, one?
Whatever happened to that litigation that you talked about earlier? Or am I jumping the gun?
No, that's fine. I have, I think sometimes it's better to react to questions than to drone on. The litigation is currently still ongoing. We had summary judgment motions that the court just granted a summary judgment for the RC Development property on the plugging of this pipe. They did not grant summary judgment on the issue of his pumping of the water onto the, to the Reichen property. That litigation is gonna continue.
So judge allowed them to plug the pipe?
He said it was an established water course that they did not have to take the water from. I respectfully disagree with that position, and it's a complicated set of circumstances as to, in fact, with respect to this. And it was, I don't think it was an easy decision for Judge Knopf. He took almost five months to make his decision, and as you know, Commissioner Fox, he's usually pretty good about making his decisions, good or bad, but-
So judge said it's okay for them to block the pipe?
He said it's okay to block the pipe, but that, that will, that issue will be appealed. But we've got a new horse in this horse race with the new owners of the-
Three sons.
Of that property, and, you know, maybe they'll be more responsive and in terms of a show of good, being good neighbors with respect to the acceptance of that water, and in fact, maybe they want it. I don't know what the levels of that, that detention pond is, but there was a time last summer that I would've thought they would've wanted all the water they could get, 'cause it was, it looked like a swamp.
I thought they would, supposedly they were gonna put fish in there.
Supposedly, yeah. So I, I, it would be my impression at least that you would want to talk to your, your county attorney with respect to what the county could do. I would be happy to, to provide any information that the county attorney would want, the state's attorney would want to consider with respect to this ask that we're making. In fact, I can initiate, if you want me to, I can initiate those contacts with your state's attorney with respect to this whole matter. I believe that, and the Reichens really believe that this is kind of about a three-step process. First of all, we need to talk to the surrounding landowners. We've got people on the Timberland addition that are really concerned about this, at least have expressed those concerns to Steve Reichen about what's gonna happen the next time we have a, you know, a sequence of heavy rains or heavy snows or whatever that are gonna cause substantial rise in the, in the levels- gonna cause substantial rise in the, in the levels of the water. So that'd be this first step, I think, making a, the contacts and having those discussions with, with your state's attorney so that he is comfortable with, with the proposal that we'd make with respect to this limited management of the drainage there. Number two, we would have that contacts and discussions with the surrounding landowners with respect to their wants. I guess we could consider any number of plans that would act as some protective device from, for the Reichen property so that there isn't, they aren't accepting the entire burden of, of the drainage down there. And then the third step of that, or the third leg of that stool would of course be that we would need to come back and, and actually develop a plan that could be adopted by the county commission to regulate the drainage down in that area. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission might have. I would understand that they might be premature and that you would want to talk to your state's attorney to see if you even have the authority to do what I suggest you have the authority to do. I think it's pretty clear in the statutes, but I thought it was pretty clear we're gonna, we're gonna prevail in that summary judgment motion, too. So if you've got any questions, I'd like to, I would be more than happy to take the time to discuss those questions with you.
Well, I think it's, it's, as you suggest, it's gonna take some additional input from, and I think also from Gary, from the planning and zoning, and from Mike on roads. We need input from both of them before we would consider any movement on this.
Yeah, I did, Mr. Steve Reichen and I came down here tonight fully appreciating the fact that I wasn't, we weren't going to get any dispositive action by the county commission on this, on this issue tonight. This is a matter, we wanna get the ball rolling a little bit so we can get some conversations started as to some way we could regulate the drainage down there so that the Reichens aren't, aren't stuck with the entire burden of that, that drainage that is created by, frankly, it's created to a large degree by the state highway construction on, on Highway fifty-two. There's water coming from every direction there that ends up on the Reichen property that was never naturally intended to be there.
I, I just have one question. This, this ditch or whatever you wanna call it here, obviously before two thousand nineteen was farmed.
It was farmed in two thousand nineteen also, and then in June when they plugged the pipe, that was the last time it was farmed.
So has this property, is this ditch or whatever trench or whatever you wanna call this, is it in the last three years have we been, has Steve been able to farm that?
He has been able to farm it, Commissioner Mark.
Has the crops, has the crops produced the way they normally would, or?
No, there, there's, and this is a, a subject for perhaps another time in terms of proof, but for purposes of our discussion tonight, the entire portion of the property that was affected by this water has really received diminished, diminished yields because of the, the, the damage that was done to the soil, the productive soils over the course of that summer when it was covered with water. Those of you that, that are familiar with, you know, agriculture, and you know that standing water creates as much problem on property in the year that it is standing there and in subsequent years, 'cause it takes the nutrients out of the, out of the ground and it creates, brings the salts up, and that's one of the problems we've really experienced in that property.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question of Mike. How bad did it damage the road?
At that time, if I remember right, we might've used one bag of cold mix, which would be like thirty or forty pound bag.
So not too badly?
No.
Commissioner Fox, I didn't, if I gave the impression that you washed out, that the actions washed out Timberland Drive, I apologize, I didn't intend to say that. It, the real problem with that was the, the, the impact on the, on the Reichen property.
Well, I guess I have just, like, one comment, 'cause I, I'm very acutely aware of this property and I'm, and of the area and of everything that happened in two thousand nineteen, that drainage down there in that area for every property is going to be a bigger and bigger problem as we keep developing down there. Even small developments make a big impact on how things are draining down there, and it's very flat, and there's a lot of hidden old channels on, sitting in the ground down there, and you just don't know what's, what's gonna happen when you make little changes. So it is definitely something that we have to be very aware of.
Both in front, in front and behind this property, to the east or the west?
To the east and the west, yes.
Yeah.
I appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation to the commissioners, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have if something comes to mind later, and I, if it's all right, if you'll give me authority, Commissioner Kettering, I would like to initiate some conversations with the state's attorney with respect to this matter.
I'll, I'll be happy to provide all this information to Mr. Fox.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I, I got one thing on that, too. I, I do agree with him with, with drainage and developments. Ryan, you said the same thing. Just like along Deer Boulevard, all that's getting developed, and it worries me that we don't have proper drainage in line for what's being developed. It is something that I do feel in the future we do need to have some kind of plan in place for future drainage down there.
Any other comments? Okay. No, I've had several, and they aren't very big, but. Thank you.
See, Mike, thanks.
Deb, if you'd.
Email him right now. I thought I'll give him what?
Yeah.
He gave me a copy of everything.
And then I'd like to get together with you guys and Gary and Benny Bun who on the commission wants to be on it. We'll get together and-
Gladly volunteer for that.
And discuss it. Okay?
You can only have two.
You have to let me know if that's three or more.
Yeah, you can only have two.
The next item on the agenda is Mr. Paul. Mutual aid agreement.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna dig back on some old files, but we did a lot of engineering study in two thousand eleven when the flood, and they were gonna tell us that we had to evacuate everything below Chalkstone Hill all the way to the dam. So there might be some information to be evaluated, you guys, at that time, 'cause we didn't know where the water was gonna go back in that time, and a lot of it was in that field of Hines and everywhere out there, so. Anyway, I'm here tonight to present here, our region, our county is in Region Six, and Region Six is comprised of the counties listed on here like Aurora, Beetle, Bonhomme, Brookings, Hanson, Hutchinson, Kingsbury, Minor, Sanford, uh, Sandburn, excuse me, Sanford, counties. And the EMs in that region, we put together several years ago, like if we had a, like the two thousand eleven flooding, for example, if we needed to bring some help to come in in our emergency operations center, Dan, you've been there at those, and where we needed help, we could ask the emergency managers from other counties to come down and help us, 'cause they have the knowledge, the experience in working with FEMA and the state and stuff like that. What this mutual aid agreement does is it gives us the authority to bring them in, but we're not paying them for the first twenty-four hours. They're just basically volunteering to come down here, or vice versa. We're going to help them in that matter. And then if it gets to be longer, we would negotiate a term of fee, or if it becomes a declaration, our wages can go to the FEMA side of it on that county or our county, depending on what we're doing. But we always like to do this yearly to make sure that the legalities, if state statute, state statute changed or something like that. But this is just a, a once a year come-in formality, if you will. Nothing has changed compared to last year, other than we gained one county. We now have Aurora County. It used to be a ten-county region, we now are an eleven-county, so. But I'd ask for you guys to sign this agreement, so that in the event we do have some kind of a disaster, we were ready for it if we needed some outside help.
So to me, collaboration is an attribute that we all should look at more often than, I, I think, fully support.
Yep. We actually were in a meeting yesterday, and we now have, there's Nebraska Pete Two, I think it's called, but it's actually like Knox, Dixon, Cedar, Wayne, they're emergency managers, and we're working on the same aspects, so if we, anything with the river or vice versa, but Woodbury County, Union County, Clay County, all part of a bigger scope. It's called a subcommittee to be able to do the same thing in the event they have a disaster to where they might need some help. So, I mean, it's, again, it's, we can't all do it by ourselves, and we need extra people to help, and they're willing to do it for, you know, for nothing unless we can do a FEMA thing and get some money that way. So it's very important.
Some of the other counties like Clay and Turner, they're in a different region.
They're in Region One. Yep, they're in Region One.
Does that go?
Dan?
Minnehaha and all that's in Region One?
Yep. I don't, they did the division. It's kinda weird based on population, 'cause I mean, we go up and around hooking the Brookings.
That's what I was wanting, and it's a good mix. I, I think it was a mix of the bigger and smaller county, I mean, 'cause Sandburn County is not a very heavily populated, what's the biggest town, is it, is it Letcher or Letcher? Biggest town? Which is pretty small, but I think it's a good mix of some of bigger counties and some small counties.
So with that, I'm just asking, do you, yes?
I would move the approval of the mutual aid agreement for the inter-county sharing of resources during emergencies or disasters within South Dakota Office of Emergency Management, Region Six.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same, motion carries.
Thank you very much. You all got the weather packet, just so you know.
When's it coming?
Wednesday night, maybe?
We're gonna have like a, a boom, what do we call it, boom?
Mega cyclone boom from March. That was a bummer.
Ground still froze.
Yeah, yeah. Well, hope not, but we're getting a lot of more, I was out there today in a couple of different places, and it's amazing, as chilly as it was, the snow's still melting, you know, so that ground is bringing up the heat, you know, and it's nice, so.
Yeah, they're saying maybe four to six inches of snow, possible freezing rain, all that good stuff.
Thank you, Paul.
You bet, thank you.
Thanks.
Next item is Mr. Redder and Planning Commission openings.
Good evening. It's that time of year again. We'll be advertising for the Planning Commission openings. We have two openings each year, and so we encourage anybody that's interested out there to send me, get in contact with me, and so we can submit their name to you next month, first meeting, and, and hopefully we'll get a lot of applicants.
And what do, are?
Matt Evans and Sherry Hoffman are up for this year, so.
Need your motion moved.
Any other questions?
Yeah, for, hint on advertising.
Move approval to advertise for Planning Commission openings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, February twenty-one, twenty, twenty-three minutes.
I move to accept the minutes as written.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Next item, the abatements.
These are abatements from the Director of Vehicleizations.
Thing is not on.
Director of Vehicleizations Office?
Wanda, your microphone's not on.
I'm just kidding it, but I'm not talking.
I, I won one for the guys there, so.
Okay, and then for the, I think I, I got them all in order for you, with the eleven point zero three seven, point three hundred, point one fifty is that the parcel should not be assessed. Parcel zero nine point zero one seven point nine 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 point five one zero, the mobile home was destroyed. Seven eight point seven ninety point zero one two point one six five and point one six five, it should be exempt, and those are-
You, you have three?
Four.
There's two exempt for the question.
Can we just do one motion and I'll put, I'll list all the parcels?
And entertain a motion to approve the abatements.
I move to approve the abatements.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, the claims.
I'd move to approve the claims.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Are there any questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same, motion carries.
Okay, now we need a motion for the Fox Youngberg claim.
I'm sorry, the what?
The, your, the, for Fox, wasn't there a separate one?
Move approval.
I'm abstaining.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is a repeat of what we thought we were gonna do Monday, but didn't get to it, so I'd like to select it.
Oh, we have payroll.
Oh, payroll, I'd skip that.
Move approval of payroll.
Don't skip that.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve payroll? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same, motion carries. Next, I'd, I'd like to set up a, a new meeting date to talk about the expectations, organizations, and priority of, of strategic goals we missed because we didn't have the meeting notification posted, and so what does Friday of this week look like to you? Dan?
I, I can make it work.
I cannot, I'll be in court until, well, depends, I could do it after three-thirty.
Well, that's when I was thinking we could do it.
Two-thirty it is. I'm joking, three-thirty, three-thirty. I can make that work.
Is that enough time to stick an agenda somewhere?
Yeah, I'll send it tomorrow. I apologize.
Well, what happens in the event of snow?
It'll be all cleared up by Friday.
I might be snowed in.
You can attend.
Just be a zoo.
Well, I'll attend by phone then.
Okay. Or I'll come and get you.
Great.
Okay, good.
So that's March eleven, ten?
Ten.
Ten? And I'll send it to the paper tomorrow.
And I'll send it to the paper tomorrow.
Public comment. You're sitting back there pretty quiet, writing notes down, are you trying to remember the things you wanted to comment on? Quiet, huh?
Well, no, not a little more like the weekend.
Okay. Hearing none. Commissioner updates.
I have one. I received in the mail yesterday a notice from the center about the rocking for Meals on Wheels, and I see that a fif, for a $50 donation, we can throw a pie at Commissioner Clemish.
I noticed that too. Yep.
So, so my question is, as many $50 donations as you get, or is it just one pie?
For each, each pie is a $50 donation.
Too many Christmas.
Yep. It was $100 last year, so the market's not, you know, the inflation, so I gotta reduce prices.
It's deflation.
Yeah, the, the center's having the Rockathon on the 16th, and for those of you guys who don't know, for the Meals on Wheels program, our seniors who can't afford a healthy meal, that's provided through them, through the donations for the meals, for the Rockathon, so it's a good program.
And what is the distance that a person needs to stand from the receiver of the pie?
To be determined, to be determined.
Well, I think that should be-
I'm saying like two feet, that way you make sure that you-
I think it needs to be shared so that we can get as many donations for the center as possible.
Would it be possible if you just bought the pie and ate it?
Um, I think what they do is they do a, like a whipped cream-
Whipped cream pie.
And they just do, do that, because pies are pretty expensive nowadays.
And they hurt.
And they, yeah, they, a pecan one might, might disfigure me permanently, so.
Any other commissioner updates?
John and I have a city-county planning meeting Thursday morning. We're gonna bring up just a few things to talk about, just some, kinda what, maybe some housing, ambulance, and I believe there's, they're looking at maybe some storage with the sheriff. I don't know a lot of details we can get back to you on that. Did you have anything you wanna add on that?
She's got EMS on the, on the agenda also, I don't know where that-
Yep.
Public safety. Yep. There was one item on there about texting and driving, so we'll discuss that, I guess.
We are, actually next week too, on Thursday, at the same time, at the center is the eight county meeting in Parker, Turner County's hosting it, and it should be a pretty good, pretty good time. Commissioner Smith from Clay County has given a presentation on home rule charter.
When is the eighth county?
Uh, sixteen.
Thirteen.
Same, same time. I won't be able to go to that, so maybe we have to divide and conquer on that.
I plan on going.
I'm going.
Yep.
Registration is at 11:30, and then the meal is at 12.
That's all I have.
Anybody else have anything? I, I attended the JDI session last Friday, and they're working on some initiatives with the state's attorney's office, and set up some committees to do some expiration, exploration of alternatives that could improve the program. Items for the next meeting.
Um, I believe that we need to, and I've been talking to various banks after the last county commission meeting and the auditors' report with the cash, amount of cash and savings, which is in excess of 4.3 million. I have been talking to some of the banks about what I'll call short-term CDs and their rates versus 4.6 or 4.7 percent for a six- or nine-month CD versus half a percent in a savings account. So I think we need to put that on the agenda, because even though I can spearhead that, I can't agree to it without commission approval.
But then, do you, have you talked to Patty? I would talk to Patty.
I'm talking to Patty tomorrow.
If you need any help with that, Wanda, I'd be happy to help you out, so.
Anything else for the good of the cause? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, for your service.
Who wants it?
I want, give it to Wanda.